Yeah, I got it.
You know what?
No, I don't, I just.
The first. Some of that patience.
Yeah, we're here. My part. Or then.
Either way, I don't know. I'm actually.
No, I got this.
I'm doing. Well, I'm sure.
You're standing.
Today?
Yeah.
That's it.
Right there.
That's.
This is very early, so I don't think you're getting old. We'll be back to a lot of this stuff.
Available whenever you need me.
I do know.
But yeah, I'm happy to also put together something to send to you all to show you the comparisons for some of the localities around us that are similar size with some of the information that I was able to gather as far as the salaries are concerned. Do you want to see something to kind of look at to gauge it? I sent it to Natasha at one point when we were just talking about what we could do for this office and what we could do for that position. Because to be honest, at the rate that we're offering it, it's it's getting there, but it's not the most competitive thing that we could probably offer to get the employees on. But it's a start, definitely a start.
What would be the closest county compared to that? I mean, hang on, when you can't do that.
No, they're not even on our radar. Off the top of my head, I don't remember. No, Essex was a lot smaller because they're only about eight thousand.
Westmoreland County is right on top of us population wise.
Yeah, and some of these population places, I want to say Culpeper was on my list. And I want to say their deputy was making about, I think, a minimum of forty five in their area, and I think they were just shy of what we were. I think they're about twelve thousand registered voters, so. And a lot, a couple of them, they were round about. None of them were exactly where we were registered voter wise. But these are just people I sent it out to the general email chain of all of the registrars in the state of Virginia, and those are just the ones that responded.
Or does Little Six rest?
I have no idea.
I just wonder.
Yeah, I'm not sure of all of their population sizes, but I just sent out an email basically saying, hey, I have about fourteen thousand registered voters. This is what I have staff wise, position wise, who's comparable, what are you offering? And they, and those are the people that got back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, the Commonwealth's Attorney and Victim Witness Budget Requests are up. Mr. Kite has requested additional funding for salaries for the Commonwealth's Attorney Office. The Victim Witness Program requests include an increased ask from King and Queen County and King William County from six thousand seven hundred and seventy three to twelve thousand ninety seven from each. For FY twenty four, the federal funding for the program grant is expected to be reduced by ten percent. The grant projected will be reduced from one oh five three oh seven to ninety seven nine forty. I'll now ask Mr. Kite to the podium.
Good evening. How are you all?
Good.
Good, yeah.
I don't even know if that's on or not. So I'll talk, go ahead. Yeah, I'll talk first about our, my office. The, the only increase that we are asking for in terms of, of salaries is five percent cost of living increase for both my legal assistant and records manager. The compensation board in the budget, and I don't think there's a budget amendment to change this, in the budget for the comp board, all constitutional officers and state supported constitutional officer employees are due a five percent increase on July, I think it's July one this year, last year it was August one. And so what that would mean was, of course, my, my salary is tied to what the comp board reimburses. My deputy's salary is split between comp board funds and the V stock grant, which is forty thousand dollars. That's not changing. So five percent of, I think her comp board salary is sixty two and some change. So that would go up based on the five percent of the sixty two. The, the, I lost track of that. The only other increase that we have, we do, we do have a decrease of two thousand dollars in our data processing. The, we have a, a case management system that's, it's essential to running our office, but it's actually becoming less costly over time than we anticipated, which is good. So we, we asked for two thousand less on that line item. We are asking for more, an increase of a thousand dollars, though, for our books and subscriptions, which kind of catches everything. So we have electronic research with Westlaw. And then we have some traditional, just old style books that we, we have in the office that aren't available online. So that, those, those are the major things with, with our office, just to give you some sense of where we are. Last year, last calendar year, twenty 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 two, we opened the most cases we've ever opened. But certainly in the twelve years I've been here. And I would suspect that it's been increasing since I took office. Last year, we opened four hundred and thirty six files. So between two lawyers, that's a pretty hefty caseload of over two hundred each. The, just for some, some points of reference, in twenty twenty one, it was three hundred and ninety. In twenty twenty, it was four hundred and twenty. The, the difference in twenty twenty and twenty twenty one is, starting in twenty twenty one, after the, the twenty twenty special session where marijuana was decriminalized, made legal, depending on how you look at it. We prosecute almost no marijuana cases now, so those have all come off the books. We've also pulled way back on our involvement in driving suspended, with people that have drive suspended driver's license while they're driving. A lot of the penalties for that have been reduced by the legislature as well as a lot of reasons people had driving suspended. It was often related to payment of court costs, and they've taken that away as a reason to suspend people's licenses. Those, those are relatively small class one misdemeanors that we were dealing with, but they certainly, not prosecuting those certainly has initially drove our numbers down. That's why in twenty twenty one, we were at three hundred and ninety. But twenty twenty two, we were extremely busy. Right now, as of today, we are opening and averaging a little bit more than one new file a day. So for thirty days into June, into January, I think we've got thirty one twenty twenty three files already open, so. And it's, I won't use the term that, that might jinx it, but it's been relatively calm for us. So, and it's not summer yet. So that, that's for my office. The Victim Witness Assistance Program, Ms. Boston, Ms. Bostick is here if you have any specific questions for her. They are one and a half, Ms. Bostick's a director, and then there's a part-time person. They handle cases, some cases that we aren't involved in. So for example, civil protective order cases that by statute, they assist people that might be seeking a civil protective order but aren't involved in the criminal process. Sometimes folks, although, you know, they don't, they don't obtain a warrant for the particular situation, which would make it a criminal case, but they do go and get a protective order. The Victim Witness Program assists just about every single person that comes to them, that comes into the court for a protective order. Their increase in volume over the last year went from approximately three hundred and fifty folks to five hundred citizens and businesses. They also assist businesses. So for example, when we, when we are handling a case where someone embezzles a large amount of money from a company, the, the victim in that case is the company, so, so they are assisting the victim, in that case, the company. So it's, it's, the Victim Witness Program has a, a lot of constituents and over a variety of things. I would also point out that they handle cases basically from the very beginning, from the moment that someone is a victim of a crime, all the way well into their, if they're incarcerated, well into their period of incarceration, they assist people because, you know, while, while my office, the case is closed, once the person is convicted and sentenced, the, they continue while that, while that individual may be incarcerated, assisting people with notifications, parole notifications. If we do have occasions where people who are barred from contacting their victims will be sending them letters from prison, for example, we'll get involved in that at a later point, but the, the initial point of contact is the Victim Witness Program. I do know that, I think Natasha mentioned that the federal funding for the program has been cut by approximately, according to the numbers, seven thousand three hundred and sixty seven dollars, ten percentish. The, which is the reason that there's a request to increase the, both the contribution from King William as well as King and Queen. So with all that, I can answer any questions you might have.
Split down the middle with King and Queen?
So King and Queen's contribution would be twelve thousand ninety seven, and King William's would be twelve thousand ninety seven. I will say that Ms. Bostick's program, it, it's a bargain for King William because about sixty five percent of her time and her staff's time is spent in King William. We're, we're obviously a larger county, but we, we have more court dates. We have a much larger caseload than our colleagues across the river.
Castle, does, does anything, is this all King William, King and Queen related cases? Or does sometimes they come outside of the state or federal program? Does money come with it?
So the, the people that are served by the Victim Witness Program are King William or King and Queen residents or businesses. If my office is involved in a special prosecution, oftentimes, not every time, but oftentimes, I will have Robin assist our victims in that because she knows our system, I know her system. But those are, you know, she, she will get help if she has a conflict of some sort from another jurisdiction, just like, just like I do when there's special prosecutions. I'm not sure I'm answering your question because maybe I don't understand it completely. So you, you're saying someone from Caroline County needs help and they, they come to King William?
I'm thinking of victim witness hardcore, trying to get, trying to disappear. Maybe I watch too much TV.
Oh, that's victim, that's victim, that's, that's not the same thing. So that's a, that's a misconception, misconception a lot of people have. We do not have a, a witness protection program in the Commonwealth, and that's not what this is. I know sometimes it gets mislabeled that way, but there is, this is assistance only. So, yeah, no, I don't, we're not housing people in, you know, old farmhouse is off of Mega Hick Road or anywhere up there, so. Yeah, yeah.
It would explain a lot.
So, yeah.
Nothing jumping out of you guys on that? Nothing jumping out of me on this one, right? And it's, yeah, I should know, but does jury trials and the increase, is that called the grade of the model, no, for your state?
Yes. So I tried a jury the last week in December. It was just a one day trial. And just the last week of December is usually the week where I clean my office from a year. So I, it, it's, it's usually a dead time. I tried, it was just a one day trial. It took me three days to prep because juries, you know, there's an expectation from folks on the evidence presentation. You can't, there's no real shortcuts like you can sometimes when you're trying a case to a judge. It was a full day trial. We, we started at, we actually had a pre-trial hearing at eight thirty. We left the courthouse, I think somewhere around nine, nine thirty, nine thirty. And so it's a very long day. Last year, we tried, went to trial on seven jury trials. We had a total of fifteen scheduled. Those other eight became, you know, they pled guilty or got continued. The, just for comparison, the year before, when they changed the, the law in twenty twenty one, we had, we had five jury trials go. So we were increasing. The first nine years I was in office, we averaged one or less jury trials a year. So it's a lot. And then when you add it in with the fact that we are as busy as we ever have been, it, it's a real strain. It's a strain on our office. It's a strain on the sheriff's office because of security that they have to provide. And, and I, we, anecdotally, it's, it's can be a strain on the community because we have people in the same jury pool coming back and coming back and coming back. And they do, and they do. And not a lot of people understand that this is a new process, so. And of course, the clerk's office has to manage all of that, so it's a strain on them.
Judge base, it's not my money, but well, I guess it is in a sense of how they changed the law from what it is legal now.
So it, it changed it from the jury determined sentencing, and typically juries, when they would find someone guilty, they would also sentence them rather harshly compared to what a judge would have done. And, and there's a variety of reasons for that. They, they remove that, that defendants now are, can, they can be sentenced by a jury, but almost nobody requests that. They requested a judge sentence somebody. And then they, when the judge sentences, they take into account guidelines and things like that. You know, I, as an officer of the court, as a lawyer, I, I didn't object to that, but we made through the Commonwealth's Attorney Association, our voices heard by some, not by enough, that this was a huge strain on the court system. There's not enough courthouses, there's not enough judges, there's not enough lawyers to, to, to handle this increase. The policy in our office, my policy is, is we're not going to break the office over this change. We're, we're not, and I, we don't. We will not schedule jury trials week to week. We, there's ought to be a week in between, things like that, because it, it is very taxing to do it correctly. Thank you. If you ever have any questions, please just reach out and I will get you an answer. Thanks.
The Clerk of Court budget increase mainly due to five percent salary increase. Additional funds are also requested in FY twenty four for education expense to enroll staff in Compensation Board career development and for furniture fixture expense for additional cabinets and private records room to house all civil and criminal files that date back to nineteen fifty. The intention is to apply for a grant assistance from the Library of Virginia to assist with this expense. I will invite Mrs. Glazberg to the podium for further information.
Hi, Sean. How are you all?
How are you?
I just wanted to make that point to it in regards to salaries with regards to the five percent increase. My complete salary is by the comp board. I've been not requesting anything for myself. The only people I'm requesting this from are employees. I have in my letter requested reclassifications of my deputy clerk, my chief deputy clerk, and one of my other clerks. I believe all my clerks, or Nita had told me that they're all classified as deputy clerk ones. And we have reviewed their job descriptions, and they are way higher qualified than just a deputy one. And my chief deputy clerk, I'm requesting that her reclassification be a class fourteen. And Veronica Rosso be reclassified as a class eleven, which would be a deputy clerk three essentially, and my chief deputy will be a deputy, chief deputy four. So those are the reasons kind of behind. I have sent, I've sent Nita their job description. I do have several of their job descriptions that I have here with me, if y'all would like to look this over. But also our caseloads have increased. As Mr. Kite has pointed out, we are very busy. And so those are the reasons why I have requested the pay increases for our deputy clerks. We also are in the career development program. And this, my deputy chief deputy clerk will, this will in twenty twenty four be able to participate in that. If she is accepted into that, she will receive a nine point three percent increase from the comp board if they accept her. So that is one incentive that I'm going to, and they have to be there three years. They have to have over sixty hours of education, which she has done all of that. She has over, she has over a hundred. So hopefully that will also kind of offset monies from the locality in regards to her pay increase. Also, I do give the county my copy fees. And this past year, that was fifty seven hundred dollars, and I would like, you know, that kind of to be looked at as an offset of what, because that is money that was previously, it used to be allocated to the state a couple of years ago. So that's one thing that I try to send over to the county. The other request that I have is the career development program. We have, some of it is through webinar. Not all of it. We, now that COVID is over, we do travel to mostly local places. But for the Virginia Circuit Court Clerks Association, I'm traveling to Abington, I'm traveling to Chesapeake. And so different places, three days overnight. They, obviously I eat a continental breakfast, but you have to pay for your expenses for being away. So that is something that I would eventually like my deputy clerks to be a part of. But that is one of the reasons why that I was requesting that, those funds. Alters supplies, I did increase the thirteen hundred dollars. I believe as Mr. Kite pointed to, we do have jurors that are deliberating or are at our courthouse until almost nine thirty, quarter to ten at night. I provide everyone lunch because we cannot leave during a jury trial. Not our, our judges, our sheriff's department, so I usually supply them lunch as well because they can't just leave and go get a sub, subway. I try to get the most, you know, reasonable lunch for everyone. But we do provide lunches for them and then snacks and drink for them. And so that is why I requested that my, mine item there be increased. And then in regards to the furniture fixtures, I see it's seventeen five. In twenty twenty one, that was how much it costs for the cabinet system. It's a safe, it's a safe storage, but it's, it consolidates a lot of our filing because I have still over twenty file cabinets that are back there. We did get a grant in twenty twenty one and ninety one hundred dollars to offset that seventeen hundred dollars. So, and it's been very helpful. It helps in finding files. It helps just in the fact that it's stored, you can roll it out and it has so much more room. So any questions for anyone or?
Actually, it's just, we should have put in from there. Day one, probably.
Yes, probably.
Real quick, could you, or, or, Ms. Brown, give me, what's the, what's the delta on the local from last year to this year? The local contribution to? Well, just in total to the allocation total? Yes. No, 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 I get that, but just what's, what's the, I'm trying to get to where, what's the gap between what we, what did it? Local contribution to her office last year, not just salaries, but all in to what they requested. We've, we've got each individual line broken up, but it's not, there's no.
Oh, in regards to just. Um, I, I have the comp board look right now for their twenty twenty three fiscal year. I have what they're, how much they provide, if that's helpful. True. So for Karen Wallace, it's forty two thousand four hundred and eighty five dollars. Diamond Stevens is thirty five thousand fifty three dollars, and Veronica Rosso is thirty six thousand one hundred and thirty four.
Ms. Glazberg, the reclassification of the employees from a ten to a fourteen is a level of magnitude not at an eleven or twelve or thirteen. Is it just where you think they are at this point?
Yes, in, in regards to their duties and their job descriptions and what they, they were originally hired in as deputy ones, and they've just never been upgraded. She has, well, Karen has taken, Ms. Wallace has taken over a hundred hours of scoring on top of everything else that she does. She does act on my behalf when I'm out, so she has some of those duties as well. Ms. Rosso, she has taken over my criminal, which is, is a lot. And she has done a fabulous job, and I truly believe that she, she deserves. And I do have, like I said, I do have their job call, their description, their job descriptions and what they actually do. It's also kind of put in my letter that I have, but if there's, you know, specifics, you want to see the whole litany of things they do, I can certainly get that to you too.
What would they use to be church, feature?
Karen will be going into her fourth year by twenty twenty four, and Ms. Rosso will be going into her third year, I believe so. And she does have qualifications she brings from the fiscal board and stuff with her, but. Our caseloads, I have, I have the statistics on our caseloads from twenty twenty one. We have one thousand ninety three, and last year was not nine hundred and sixty two. We also have, have, and I have that as well, if y'all would like a copy of this. I believe I gave you a copy, but that was just through October. I haven't updated one. And then for deeds and land records, I believe I've mentioned in there, it's the conveyances. But in regards to everything that we record in regards to land records was thirty four hundred and thirty four. And Ms. Wallace, the majority of those, we are all cross-trained because we're small. I mean, it's just the four of us. I had a hundred and ten marriage license, six hundred and eighteen judgments, Wilson fiduciaries, two hundred and ninety seven, financial statements, forty nine. So total instruments was about five thousand four hundred and eighty three.
How does that compare to, say, last year?
Yeah, I, I do not have that stats, status report from last year. This is just simply from January to December. I'd have to look at it. I do know the land records did increase because I just did my comp board budget, and you have to put in your caseload, and I know it did increase. I don't know.
That was just one of them. I guess you don't have a code on yours because you're doing reclassification, so the increase will be.
I'm, I'm, I'm like the two increase, and then my, Ms. Stevens, who's my deputy clerk one, she, she'll stay as the deputy clerk one for right now. They're just asking for, you know, a merit increase, but.
I just didn't see it on the column.
No, I, I, well, I guess the, the answer is to, that's the one question, just do it math when I know, but I'm good.
Everybody, not, not at math. Thank you.
All right, thanks.
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 Thanks, thanks.
Commissioner of Revenue is up next. The Commissioner of Revenue, Revenue has presented three options for staffing the office in FY two thousand and twenty four. And wishes for the board's direction. Option one includes creating a real estate assessment office by adding. One full-time assessor position to our office. Option two include an additional full-time deputy positions with a focus on personal property for her office. Allowing then for two fully trained individuals to perform all personal property duty. Option three includes the office maintaining the status quo of only doing what is absolutely necessary. Both option two and three includes an increase for professional services to assess, to assess new construction. I'll ask Ms. Funkhauser to the podium for further details.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the board. I want to thank you for amending the ordinance seventy four thirty four to make it less burdensome for the. For me and for the volunteer firefighters and bus crew squad volunteers to receive the vehicle license fee exemption. And I thank Ms. McIntyre for taking the lead and contacting the fire departments to inform them of the change. I've already received a response from one department and expect to receive the other departments letter very soon. So thank you very much for that. And I want to thank you and the administration for continuing to support the DMV Connect mobile clinics at the King William Recreation Center. I think this is a wonderful service and convenience for our citizens. I plan to schedule another clinic in March. The administration now pays the hundred and fifty dollar cost for the advertisement and the courier to run the, the week before the clinic occurs. I added that expense to my advertising budget plus additional funds to place an ad when the first and second half real estate bills are mailed. The mailing address problems that occurred after the software conversion have been corrected. However, this office would still receive numerous calls from citizens who have not received their bill. I fear the problems with the U.S. Postal Service will not be resolved anytime soon, and I think placing an ad in the courier. Once the bills are issued would just be a nice courtesy for our citizens.
So, do you deal with the tide water review at all?
No, they, they don't cover the county very much. I know it's our newspaper of record. I mean, but I certainly could also put notices in there also.
I just, I don't know how much they charge for the electronic version. I, I'm not going to pay two fifty for a four-page. Piece of paper, but I do subscribe to the online version.
Yeah, I know, like, the courier is very accommodating, and I think it's like two hundred dollars is the regular price for a quarter page ad. But because I committed to at least for a year, it was a hundred and fifty. You know, I don't know. So I just put the two hundred. For the two notices for when the real estate bills go out.
But you realize they don't cover the handover addresses in King William, as well as the West Point addresses.
Yeah, I mean, I could certainly add that.
Just so you're aware.
Yeah. Or are you able to do that when they don't have enough public pay? I'm not state codes required in Houston.
I mean. The state, I think, like, the newspaper of record is where you have to put your ads for, like, changes in the ordinance or meetings and stuff. But just a general notice to citizens, and I think there's any strictly.
I'm talking about legally required notice.
Yeah, this is just a courtesy to let them know that bills have been mailed. I mean, I certainly, I could also contact the town and ask them to put on their website when bills are mailed. I think the King William County website gets a lot of, you know, looks also. But I just, we just received so many calls that person hasn't received their bills. I've had Abby check, make sure that the bill was actually printed, and we were, it was printed with the correct address, and we were charged postage for it. I confirm the mailing address is the same, and the people just aren't receiving the mail.
You know, it's not a whole lot of money, but it's next to the last line item.
Yeah.
You have uniforms and wearing apparel?
Well, if I had a reassessor, I think he would need shirts or a jacket that identifies him as a King William County employee if he's going on properties.
So you, you read this budget line item, that didn't mean anything to this.
Well, it depends, for the uniforms, and if there's a reassessor, then I would need.
But you don't have one, is what I'm getting.
Yeah, yeah. So right now, no, I don't need it.
So option three is pretty much status quo, as it is now?
Yeah, and we're just getting by.
You discussed several times that hiring our own in-house assessor would pay, pay for itself.
It, it would mostly, real estate is a two-person job. And my biggest fear without, you know, that I spoke with Mr. Ashcap this afternoon. Is there's only five companies in the state that are certified by the state tax department to do a general reassessment. And, and if we do another one in four years, we just paid three hundred and thirty thousand dollars for that general reassessment. In four years, is it going to be four hundred thousand dollars? Is it going to be five hundred thousand dollars? What happens if you only get one bidder and it's six hundred thousand dollars? That it's hard for the county to plan that. Are you set aside a hundred and fifty thousand a year for the next reassessment? Are you set aside two hundred thousand? They, um, the reassessor you would have to pay for, but the second position would still be covered by the comp board. Real estate is more than a one-person job. When you take in land use and property transfers, new construction, building permits. You know, taking pictures of new properties. Now, when Mr. Pearson went out this summer and new homes were started, he took pictures. Like at the foundation. He didn't go back out now in November and December when those homes are finished and take new pictures. So like all the new home, new homes in two thousand and twenty two. I would like a new picture taken of them and put on the website, but someone has to do that. And state code doesn't require that all parcels be looked at in one year. Every parcel just needs to be looked at once every six years. So if we're updating constantly pictures, we know which parcels have been seen. And if you have someone out there and there's a new home, they could take pictures of the, the twelve other houses on that road and update those parcels. And then, but, you know, better database we have, the better for the county and for its citizens. There's a lot of tools envisioned that we're not using right now.
So option one.
Yeah.
Is doing just what you're talking about, hiring a college grad. And, you know, letting, let him go through the training process.
Yes.
Okay, so how long would that take?
It would take between three and five years to get that person certified.
At, at which time, in today's money, we, we, if he was fully qualified, it would be a hundred and ten thousand dollars.
At least, if you could find someone. I mean, and then that would be outside my office. I mean. The state code, and there's some commissioner revenues who do the market analysis themselves and do the general reassessment. The state code allows me to do that. I mean, but the problem with that is, if I say someone's house went up ten percent, I have to be able to defend it. And I don't have the time and the research to justify those changes without an assessor.
So this person that would, that would be doing it would not have to be certified? Is that what you're saying?
Not at first. What I envision is I hire somebody. He's out there picking up all new construction and new building permits. We did all the building permits that Fred worked for two thousand and twenty two that were not new construction. Added, I forget the number, but the tax on that value at the current rate would be an additional eight thousand dollars a year. So if it was eight thousand dollars a year for the last eight years, and the cumulative effect of that is quite a bit of money. But he would be doing that and getting certified and taking some of the load off my, you know, deputies right now. So I could focus more on compliance and auditing of businesses that is just not happening right now. And so I would hire this person, they would work, they'd get certified, and. As they're working in the field, they're granting, getting experience that, you know, would help them get certified. And then in two years' time, hi- hiring, just to have a market analysis done. And have our reassessor apprentice with that general reassessor just for the market analysis and gain the experience. That they can get certified. You know, I'd have to speak with David C. at the State Tax Department and develop a course of study for this individual. I would have to create a work plan for this individual. There'd have to be an employment contract. You know, for this person, say, you meet these standards and you will get paid this, and you have, you know, to work for the county, you know. After you get certified for this long, so that we're not training someone to go ahead and leave. So there'd be, you know, steps to it, but in the meantime, we do need another full-time person in the office. And they would be picking up the building permit. So if we hire someone at thirty six and they pick up eight thousand permits, that's forty four thousand dollars. If they're fifty five thousand dollars salary, that's, you know, covered. And in the meantime, you're building a reassessment department and, and they do, you know, once they do get certified, you can meet them. Move them out of my office. And have, and the county could be in trouble. New Kent County, their commissioner revenue is a certified appraiser, and she runs their reassessments. And so. You know, there's that option too. If you hire someone, you know, and they can become commissioner and be the reassessor, and then. You know, eighty thousand dollars of their salary is covered by the comp board. You know, like you said before, when I presented it, the least cost option isn't always the best option. This is like a decision that. The, the board needs to make. Do you want to get it started and see how it goes and then move it out? Do you want to just move it out? Right now, and, you know, you know, hire, you know, a certified assessor, or do you want to? Not think about it for another year or two. That's a policy decision the board has to make, and I just presented these options. But you have to be thinking about in four years, how much is that reassessment going to cost? And that could be a very big number. And also on the reassessor, speaking of Mr. Hudgens, I don't have a line item there. This reassessor is going to be traveling the county and looking at homes and taking pictures, and there'd be a cost associated with that. And, and the building department, those inspectors go out every day and do inspections. So that, I would figure that cost would be like half of the cost. There's a line item Mr. Hudgens said for that. And if I had an assessor who got two or three days a week, and so I would need like fifty percent of that cost of a regular inspector for. Visiting properties, and probably they would need a cell phone if they were out of the. Or I, I don't know how it works with the inspectors, if they have a vehicle or if they take mileage. I, I don't really know. But that's something that would have to be worked out.
I would highly recommend. We're not making a decision tonight, of course, but highly recommend that we focus on. A work team to look at this option. I think it's, I think it's the way to go.
Well, you know, in the, before the last reassessment that we threw out that fiasco, I think it was the sentiment of the board to, to do this.
Yeah, that if you wanted to create your own real estate assessment and not have the commissioner in charge. That is the board's option, but you need to go about it in a methodical way that I would cooperate and help train. You're not going to hire someone who knows right away how to do the real estate transfers or how to issue a supplemental bill in audience. Or how to sketch and upload photos into Vision. So. You know, if you start it under me, then they can move out and they would know that it would be a smoother transition. But if you want to go right away out of there, I would certainly cooperate with that person. But I would hope that you would, rather than just firing the person in my office right now who's doing the supplemental bills and turn. Take that person because real estate is a two-person job. You know, we had almost a thousand property transfers in two thousand and twenty two, like two hundred new homes were added. So, I mean, it's a two-person job.
So, so option one is you've only got one.
Well, then, because I have the person in my office already who's being partially funded by the comp board, who would be real, like, right now.
As a temporary.
Right now, I work real estate and Ms. Bergeron works real estate. Ms. Bergeron would continue to work the real estate and the reassessor then would work real estate. Yeah, and then that would bring me time more to develop, you know, procedures for compliance or auditing. Or getting better statistics. Every time I come to the board, it seems like I have to go back and. What's, what are these numbers and find the data that I need, you know, you know, we have, I have information on veterans. But I don't have it organized to see how many are recent for the last five years, especially for personal property tax. You know, we have, you know, more veterans every year who are getting, getting personal property tax exemptions. I expect so many. We've had about like three dozen calls for people requesting real estate relief applications, other than the people who are already in the program. So, you know, yeah, I want to keep better statistics so the board is able to make better decisions. And I don't really have the opportunity to do that when I'm answering the phone and saying, oh, you sold your car, let me check DMV. Oh, you need a property card, let me send it to you. I mean, I do it because we have the calls and it's necessary. But then I can't focus on other things. So you're paying a lot of money for someone to answer the telephone and print property cards and check DMV. I, I, I do think it needs, if that's something you think about, would need more discussion and get a better budget with, you know, the travel cost, the cell phone cost. You know, you have to pay an attorney, I guess, to work up an employment contract.
Right, and I guess that's, that's my thing right now is I think this is viable. I think the idea could work. I'm not convinced that the budget amounts are special.
Yeah, I mean, it may be too low, but maybe the training doesn't come the first year, and, you know, I, I can't say. You know, I don't know how much an inspector, how much that costs for him to be out there every day doing building inspections. You know, what's the annual cost of that? I don't know. And one way or another, the county is going to pay if you have an assessor, your own assessor, you're paying the reset, so.
And I think, I think that. The overall consensus is the goal would be to.
Yeah.
To have an in-house assessor in one form or another, whether it be under your office.
Yeah. Yeah.
Stration. But I want to make sure that if we commit to it, that we're committing to something that's going to work long term.
Yeah.
And so, you know, I want us to make sure that we, we've got a good grasp of, of what we can have to attract for the salaries.
Yeah.
And then obviously we've got considerations for your deputies as well here that we need to, to think about, but I think if we're just focusing on the. You know, the, the idea of the assessor's office.
Yeah.
Have we gotten any input from any other low, localities about where, where they are with? What they're paying these people, because even, I, I, I'm not convinced that one ten is a certified assessor's salary.
I think.
If we get, if we get somebody there.
Yeah.
We're going to have to start paying them that at some point in time, again, if not more, so.
Well, the Gloucester assessor was making like one twenty.
Right.
So.
For the private side.
Yeah, so I mean, that's what, that's why we'd have to have an employment contract, and there's benefits. To working for local government as opposed to private contractor. You know, you have your holidays off, you have regular hours. You know, there, there's trade-offs when people want for their quality of life. And, you know, if you hire someone and train them and they realize, I commit for, you know, five, ten years. And then I can make a lot of money, and in the meantime, I'm making decent money, and I have a nice work environment. Yeah. Yeah.
Well, I, I know, and now, we didn't get to hear from Gloucester the, the other night, but, but apparently Gloucester was going to come prepared to the planning district commission. Bring about the idea of regional reassessment again too, but I don't know what format it's going to take. They've been trying it for ten years, and then nobody's ever jumped on board.
See, but.
Realistic.
If I had an assessor under me, we could, like, less than half the cost to do a market analysis reassessment. That we could do in two years. Like less than half the cost to do a market analysis reassessment that we could do in two years. And do that, you know, as long as the properties are being looked at, you can do, just pay for a market analysis reassessment. Rather, I mean, the big cost of this last reassessment was Pearson had four or five people out in the field for months and months and months looking at eleven thousand parcels. I mean, and that's a huge, like, you know, employee expense for him. That's where the cost comes from. But if you already have someone at staff looking at the parcels and you can, you know, show that every parcel has worked, been looked at in that, you know, once every six years, you can do a market analysis study. So, but I mean, that's a decision, decision for the board. You have to decide. You know, how you want to do, I mean, if you go out, I have to say that our data for real estate is not great. So if you went out and hired a certified assessor, he would probably spend a year or two just getting our data better. We don't have any neighborhoods on our property cards. Yeah, and that's something that would need to be done. I mean, there's a lot of tools and vision that we aren't using right now that could make having a real estate assessment department very viable. So. But yeah, I do think, you know, probably if we have the reassessed it, the budget needs a little bit more work. And if you're not to set your own reassessment department, then I can help with those numbers too. But on my PowerPoint presentation, I did have ads for a real estate technician, one, two, and like what they're able to do. So, you know, this would also be something you'd have to get with Ms. McEntire. And there'd be different levels for the real estate person who would work with the appraiser. So. Okay.
Thank you, Mel.
But really think about the advertising because I really want to put those ads for our citizens and keep what the DMV cannot. I think our citizens really do like that. I mean, or keep it in, you know, the advertising right now, I get the bill from the courier and then I. Send it over to Chris and then she pays it. It would just cut out the middleman right there. Okay? I thank you very much.
Thank you.
And next we'll talk about the treasurer's office request. The treasurer's office request includes funding for the treasurer, two full-time deputies and one part-time. The FY twenty-three approved budget amount does not include the increase of thirty thousand five eighty-two, five eighty-two. Approved by the Board of Supervisors motion on December twelfth, two thousand twenty-two. I, I just wanted to make that note. When you look at that comparison of what the budget lists on the, the Excel spreadsheet versus what her request is. Keep in mind that we did amend the budget by thirty thousand already this year, that is not included in the FY twenty-three one that you're looking at. So I'll invite Mrs. Carlton to the podium for additional information that might be needed.
Thank you, just wait, what?
Um, so the professional services in FY twenty-two, it was seventy-eight thousand six eleven. And I decreased that down to twenty-six thousand two forty-three, so it was a decrease in fifty-two thousand three sixty-eight. And that was due to the taxing authority consulting services. They were billing us when somebody had a, a service that, a legal fee. We were getting the bill for that and turning around and paying it once the citizen paid their taxes. That has since been changed and when the citizen pays to tax now, they just keep that. So it, it doesn't come to us and we have to turn around and send it back.
Well, that's good because that's the way it was originally brought to us.
Yeah, so that's been straightened out and they are now keeping that money and sending us just the tax amount. And then the books and subscriptions, I asked to move the one-fifty. Because we don't have books and subscriptions in the office, so I asked to move that to the dues and association membership. Or I'm sorry, to travel and convention and education, which would be for. For education through the Treasurers Association and Welding Cooper. And then the printing and binding was a five hundred dollar increase. That's with the BAS. Just in the. The cost with postage and all that goes up. And then. The postal services increased the three thousand due to the postal service increase. And office supplies, a five hundred dollar increase due to just the increase in, in the paper and the supply.
So really the increase request is, is. Looking at it holistically from what we amended in the budget this year, it's really more like a thirty-five thousand dollar increase request as opposed to the sixty-five that we see here. And really that's for another full-time deputy?
I'm not asking for another full-time deputy.
Okay, so then.
That was the part-time that was turned into full-time.
Okay.
Correct? Is that? Yeah.
I, I was thinking the, the discussion on the part-time that you couldn't find anybody at that one.
So. The part-time, it's, nobody does want to work part-time, unfortunately, no.
Well. Depending on where you live, drive seventeen, eighteen miles each way, you know, I can understand that.
Everybody that was applying for the part-time. That was being hired back in, I think it was November, December, they were coming in, but they were wanting full-time.
They wanted.
Correct.
Yeah.
Again, I guess the question Mr. Haskett, Mr. Hudgens, is it practical for the county to buy a postage machine, electronic postage machine? Are these literally lick and store?
No, we have one. We have a postage machine.
Okay.
It's still not free.
No, and I have the bills. I don't know if y'all want to see any of the BMS bills.
But we're using the most efficient postage capability.
And they do make you pay upfront before they'll send the bills out. We have to wire them, for an example, for real estate or personal property, I had to send them eighty-three hundred dollars for postage before they would even. Entertain sending the bills out and for personal or real estate, the postage that we had to send them was twenty-six hundred dollars. And then if there was a credit, I would get them to apply it to the bill before we paid the rest of the bill off.
Probably because they've been burnt before.
Huh?
Probably because they've been burnt before and, and had trouble collecting.
In the second half, real estate, we had a three hundred and eighty-eight dollar credit. And on personal property, we had a nine hundred and ninety-eight dollar credit. That I had applied before we paid the rest of the bill.
Are we pushing paper because it's per state code or is there any option that we can proceed to purely electronic?
So by state code, you have to mail out delinquent letters after three months. So after three months of being delinquent, you have to send out the real estate and you have to send out the personal property after three months of being delinquent. And that is state code.
I'm just thinking long-term to try to decrease our expenses for postage. But if code doesn't allow it currently, that's something later in the future probably.
And I have had citizens ask if we can email them their bills. And that's something that I plan on following up with admins because there is an option in the software to put an email address. But I don't know if we can push a bill to them. If it's just everybody or one person, because there's only a select few that want that bill emailed.
And if you don't get a return, how did you, how do you track that? Do you know that they get?
Correct.
I guess same thing with the US Postal.
We had a lot of people come in this year saying that they did not get their bill. It was a tremendous amount.
I think a lot of them are just late. Ours was later than normal.
And the bills went out this year. I had them out in October. Real estate and personal property went out at the same exact time.
That, that US Postal is not quick.
I just had the same thing that Travis has mentioned, but I guess it's more. And like you said, the current budget, twenty twenty-three says thirty-six, but we amended that in December, so really that's sixty-six something.
Uh, we did negative, we actually had to do like twenty thousand in this year. She didn't want a part-time.
Right.
That offset the total cost of the, that I mentioned, I have the numbers back, but I think it's fifty thousand, I think, overall. I, I don't have the numbers.
Right, right, I was just.
But you amended, so it's thirty, but we had to do that twenty to help us get to that thirty.
Right.
So this, so twenty-fourth, we have to divide the fifty, now leave that twenty for the part-time.
So we are adding a part-time employee?
We have.
Okay, so the request is a part-time employee over and above. Right. Yes, okay. Okay.
We have any more, you know, who, content?
Sheriff Walton's request for the sheriff's department animal control in E-nine-one-one reflect and asks for increase in the following. The sheriff's office. Overtime wages are needed to ensure coverage of all shifts. Professional services for pre-employment physical exams and drug testing costs and for investigative law enforcement databases. Education for trainees to enhance abilities to provide service to our community. And fuels. The increase is actually a calculation I calculated, use, utilizing the current year expenses and estimating the overall outcome for FY twenty-three. So I did bump that up. He doesn't know I did, so just saying. Animal control department includes a request for increase in education to cover professional development training and required certification and chemical capture. Fuel costs, again, calculation I have estimated. Police supplies to replace the tranquilizer gun. E-nine-one-one department includes a request for increase for overtime wages to cover shifts to ensure that there are at least two dispatchers in nine-one-one center at all times. Education to provide funding for professional development and attendance to association of public safety communication officers. And the reduction for health insurance is based on the current cost that reflects the drop of employees' participation in family plans. At this time, I'll ask Sheriff Walton to step up to the podium.
Good evening, gentlemen. Thank Mr. Brown gave you more information than I probably would have, so I don't know what else to say. Other, you know, what questions that you might have, I can expand a little bit on some of the things that we had asked for increases on. But I guess the best thing to do is what, what questions you may have and then I, I can go from there. I think that's the best way to do it.
I think this one is more for Mrs. Brown. What price per gallon were, were we using last year?
I don't. What we did when we moved to Apple. And what we were at and that's where we came up with the budget this year, which I will be coming to in the next month and a half and doing more budget. But, um, and on fuel for all parties. It's pretty much that is what we had decided.
Even though, even though the, uh, fuel prices have come down drastically. Yeah, I was just wondering, the, the formula that we use.
Yeah, we used to lock in with a set rate. I guess y'all did up here and know the town did and. We had some good years and some bad years with that too.
Luckily, we did have a, the Motorola, uh, power project, we painted, uh, under what we made that first. So we have that, so we planned that we'll actually offset our debt service, but I can now use the federal plan and cover all of these with, um, fuel just. So I won't have to, I won't have to.
Better, I'll look at our current budget and I'll get worried.
Sheriff, I noticed on the grants subparagraph, you have a DJ, GCJS grant for two SROs. Since we have four, what, are we, is that coming out of county?
Yes, two, two are county-funded and two are SROs that are funded this year by the grant. One was a grant, well, actually, all of them have been a grant at some point in time. The other two have. The grants expired and then locality picked it up. The, the two newest ones that we did this year are just starting. Does it get for three years, I believe?
Is it possible we could get grants for all four?
You can't supplant what we already have. We can expand, because we have any more schools to expand to, so.
Is anybody tracking that in the general assembly because of the nature of the latest shootings or what?
I don't know. I hadn't heard of anything this, this year in the general assembly, but SROs, I know it was a big thing last year. That's where the funding came from to add these SROs. I think most localities, if they put in port, they got it. You know, I, I know, Mr. Kite and Ms. Dave were both mentioning about the courts and the number of court cases that were going, our court days have expanded. We're, we're in court a lot more these days, or, and not just for the day, we're running into late in the afternoon and evening of some of these cases. The jury summonses that we are put out, you know, it's more than just, you know, show for that day for court and we've got to get these jury summons out. And we have a lot of jury notices that go out and we have to spend quite a bit of time trying to get personal service on. And we may sometimes take several trips to someone's house before we can actually locate them to make that jury service, jury service. So that, that's been a big issue with us this year, with the court services. Growing as much as it has with, with the number of days alone has, has been, been hard, but then, then the days get long, the enforcement want to get it long, we're looking at overtime.
You're short eight deputies, correct?
Seven as of today. Still, I'll say, one position date, I may have another filled by the end of the week. So we're, we're slowly working on that. We're, we're chipping away at it. If we can just keep who we have here. You know, if we can just keep them in here and bring in some new ones, hopefully we'll be, we'll do better, but right now, yeah, that's where we are.
Nationwide problem.
Sir?
It's a nationwide problem.
It, it absolutely is a nationwide problem and the things that happened in the recently, you saw on the news, does not help our profession at all. It, it sickens my stomach to see these things happen. It tarnishes the way we all, the good guys do our job. Sorry, I got off on that. Sir?
There's nothing you can say about that other than it's wrong.
Yes, you're absolutely right. On the nine-one-one side, I think. There's nothing really spectacular on that. We're, we're trying to hold the line the best we can. Unfortunately, a lot of, a lot of the, and this goes for the sheriff budget as well as nine-one-one budget. A, a lot of the maintenance contracts we have for computer software, for the nine-one-one systems, for our CAD, which is the driving force for our records and their. Nine-one-one calls that come in, all of that maintenance stuff keeps going up on us and it's costly. And, and unfortunately, we're kind of tied to that. We can't, we can't stop. And and unfortunately, we're kind of tied to that. We can't, we can't stop it. We've got, we've got to have these things uh, to make it all work. So that that's a big, big expense. In the capital uh, plan this year, I mentioned in there about additional storage records. I was hoping uh. Really hoping uh, that the county would go along with us on this and maybe some of the officers over here would partner up and and do this also because. Storage of paper records. Is tremendous. We we, I I know I told you just before, we have to maintain records for so long and we're we're keeping them. Uh, but we're running out of space to keep all these these paper records. So if we can digitize things and put it all into, you know, digital form and it's stored in a. Cloud somewhere, you know, it really would help us out and and the the this uh, in this capital improvement plan, this company that does this. Uh, will come in and they will take all of our records. They will scan them all for us and and put them all into that 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 system. Uh, so that we won't have to do that physically, have to do that because that's a chore in and of itself to do so many little records, but it would alleviate a lot of spacing issues that we are now experiencing.
Mr. Ashcraft, uh, I thought that we we were discussing some digital storage. Is that anything that can piggyback?
I think it's the same thing.
Absolutely, that um. That's not just what the sheriff's office, we're looking at every, every opportunity we can't click. I know the serving clerk has, will probably have the same. Issue with all the documents that she has. So no, that'll be uh, that'll be certainly be addressed in the budget when I presented.
Thank you. And of course, the normal uh, re- replacement of vehicles are keeping the fleet moving. Um, as we, our vehicles are still aging, uh, even though. And we're trying our best to keep up with with the mileage, but we're running very high mileage on these vehicles before we can even turn them out. And you know, the maintenance cost, of course, on that in and of itself. So it's just, just another recurring expense that we have to have. Just unfortunately, it's the. It's the cost of doing business. And while we try to keep it uh, low, you, I mean, you you see what the cost of vehicles are today. Uh, it's no different than police vehicles that we get. The cost has gone up. Uh, everything that goes on the car has gone up.
Sheriff, just curious, I know Ms. Brown, you had came up with that that program that we have, but some of the vehicles, did we still have that or is it gone now? I know. It was a couple of years back. She got us into a program where we could get, what was the plan? We got. That's right. Is that available? Can we still do that or is that gone? So that might help.
That's correct.
Thanks.
Do you cannibalize the equipment or is it often obsolete already?
I I'm sorry, do we what?
Cannibalize the.
Oh, yes, sir. E- everything we can take off, the reuse we will. Unfortunately, the body styles change. So the like the light bulb on top, if the vehicle's changed in the width of the. The roof line, then that doesn't work. Uh, the consoles inside, sometimes we can save those, but sometimes it's specific to that car. Uh, but radios, uh, light switches and uh, those things like that that we can take out, we do.
You try to do that at house?
Uh, no, sir, we try not to, uh, honestly, because we don't want to mess it up. We, the same company that installs and ports, we we get them to uh, uninstall.
I don't think you want to do that with the electronics.
Well, not just that, but the the airbag, so airbag sensitive in these cars, we don't want to do something like that.
If the prison where Katie's going, that will get a lot of times they're not transferred.
That that's correct.
Your, your command vehicle, uh, how often is that used? I can't say I've ever seen it anywhere.
Well, it's used on major crime scenes that we have. Uh, we used it. Uh, it ran continuously for two weeks straight when we had a. A fair in Braxton was missing a few years ago. We, you know, we, we were down there working that search operation. We ran, I think, two weeks straight in a row. I think it barely got cut off at any point in time, other than to refuel. That that is something that, you know, it's a combination of a command vehicle as well as a crime scene vehicle that has all of our stuff on there. It's housed, it was housed at the firehouse. Uh, but because of spacing needs, they had us back down here, sitting outside uh, behind the sheriff's office. It was an old uh. Vehicle being used by, I believe, New Kent County. We we take, we got it from them and retrofitted it to our needs. I think it's a two thousand. But we have a lot of issues with them. Not too sure these days. How safe it is to use it, but it's still there.
Let me just ask, in in a perfect world, and you get all of those open positions filled. How does that leave your manpower situation? Are you then happy with that or there's still needs that you would say?
Well, uh, uh, before last board meeting, I was, I thought we were pretty comfortable with that. Then uh, the potential of new developments and commercial uh, growth up on three sixty. Uh, is a concern for the future. For right now, for the next year too, I think we're okay. Uh, probably for a little while into the future. Uh, but uh. Depends on how much growth that that spurns, far spurs, whatever word is up there.
Can you give us just a gut feel on your overtime pay versus if you had manpower, live people? How much you're spending?
Yeah, I I can't tell you would cut it drastically. It was certainly would cut out some of it. We are, we are just trying to keep enough. People on the street to cover the county uh, from one end to the other. Uh, and some days, a perfect example, last Thursday. I had an deputy worked twelve-hour night shift, got off at six AM, but had to parent court at nine AM. Whose case was not called until almost two o'clock that afternoon uh, before he was called for the case. Well, he was due back for the six o'clock that shift that night. I couldn't, I couldn't have him come back out and work after, you know, sleep. So I had to pay somebody to come back, a lot of persons come at work overtime to cover that shift. To help. So those things like that, and then of course, holiday pay, and that catches us sometimes with. You know, with two or three people working, they all get the holiday pay for being out there. Uh, but it it would, it would decrease it some. It's not going to eliminate it, but it would help uh, decrease and and keep our, keep our numbers on the street. That's where we struggle is keeping. Keeping enough people on the street to handle all the calls that are coming in. Uh, you know, one arrest, a deputy is tied up for three hours at minimum. Uh, if we pick up a TDL again, I'm repeating things I told you before, uh, temporary detention order for mental evaluation. That could be anywhere from six hours to seventy-two hours that I've got somebody tied up at a hospital with that person. Uh, and then we've got to find people to do that. So, you know. It's more than just saying you go work a shift and go home and your day is done. Uh, we have a whole lot more going on than just that. Don't make it really easy on me tonight.
We're not.
You, you're leaving us.
Is that what it is? Sir?
We're not finished with the budget yet.
I know, I know, I know.
Who values for sure?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Department of Social Services and CSA are up next. Ms. Tevis and I have worked together and this year we are able to present a detailed breakdown for federal, state and local shares of the budget expense request from from social services. The overall increase request is two hundred and ten five eighty-two. Of that, one oh three two oh nine increase from Fed. Fifty-six nine fifty-eight increase from state and the local share increase would be fifty thousand four hundred fourteen. CSA request reflects an overall, overall increase of eighty thousand six seventy-four. Of that, sixty-eight oh five eight from the state, fifteen, uh, fourteen six, one sixteen for local share increase. So now I'll turn the podium over to Ms. Tevis.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
So I'm, I'm just going to highlight the increases that we have this year in the budget. Uh, if you want to start with the Family Preservation Fund, this is a grant that is um, applied for by DFS. This is to help um, funds for kids who are entering foster or at risk for entering foster care. This was not applied for last year with the department. Uh, we are getting put on notice more and more by court for different cases. Um, by the judge of kids are possibly a potential to come into care due to truancy or due to custody issues. Um, this fund would help us. Um. Eliminate some of that if we can put some services in place with the families upfront. The five percent increase in the budget um, is requested. Also, overtime is requested. The department increased to a forty-hour work week in September. And overtime funds were not budgeted for. And there's also an increase for other professional services. This is with our attorney. There's an increase in amount of work that's being done with our attorney. Um, being put on notice for court. We were actually in court today. We were put on notice for three cases, um, two that we did not have a case open with in the department. Um, the other two requests are for um, travel and dues and memberships. Um, conferences are back to face-to-face. Uh, and on dues and memberships, the amount previously budgeted for that would only cover the dues for myself to become um, belong to the league. It does not cover dues for anyone else in the department. Um, for them to attend any kind of conferences either.
Is your attorney the employer?
No.
So you're, you're just paying contract.
Correct.
Amanda, if you could, uh, to those that aren't aware of this, explain the eighty-five point five uh, percent reimbursement back from the state and and pass-through funds.
Sure. So I'm going to have Brown help me with that.
Okay.
What's the eighty-five percent?
The eighty-five point five reimbursement back from the state and pass-through funds.
Right.
Just, just for those who don't understand it, I mean, it's the, th- these numbers are nowhere near the the county, uh, the county cost. It is on the bottom line.
Right, so budget line eight fifty-five is the one you would be looking at for that. Um, that's the one where uh. That is, and then whatever it does change, I don't have the number in front of me, but when we have met our pass-through. Uh, what changed to them? Thirty-two? It flipped where our share.
It's all a lot of.
We've worked through the pass-through. Um, but with the, we're not, we're not doing that. We we strategically planned to try to just. Work within the budget of the state is work to get a sense and work with the decision to have.
Yeah, just, you know, for those that don't understand how that works. I was hoping, you know, that we could enlighten some people that that think that we're spending a whole lot of money here. You know, we've, we've done a lot of good. For the people of this county and the people would really be amazed at the number of people that we actually help through social services. And I know I'm not on that advisory board anymore, but I was very proud to be on the social services board when I was on it. I don't really have any questions myself.
It's a question I ask of every director every year. What are you doing to try and decrease need in the county?
So we're partnering with the job assistance and that to help people become more self-sufficient. Our self-sufficiency position right now is vacant, so I'm trying to fill that. Um. Currently, the public health emergency is going to end. So um, we couldn't cut people off for Medicaid or do any renewals for SNAP, that's going to change. So the amount of numbers of people receiving some assistance is definitely going to go down.
You're the first director that's ever answered it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Now, another question.
Steve.
Um, I'm good.
But I I will say one time.
I'm not good.
The money, it's still all tax money.
It is.
No matter where it comes from.
It is, but a lot of people, a lot of, a lot of people don't understand the formula. And and they don't realize how many people that are actually helped in this county by social services. It's amazing.
I think you're good.
Thank you.
Good evening and thank you for considering the CSA budget. Um, I will say that um. Starting with COVID and since COVID, mental health needs have risen dramatically. And we are seeing um, in CSA, we're seeing a lot more parent referrals. Asking for help for their children. And. Um, we have different expenditure lines. Based on uh, what the different children are mandated, how they're mandated to be served. And they fluctuate from year to year. And you will see a tremendous increase. In two, two A one, which is treatment foster care, non-four E. Because uh, social services had three siblings. Come into care that are very, have very many needs and very many behaviors. And need a lot of services. So you could see that that. Increased tremendously. That budget line went up to uh, a request. For two hundred twenty-five thousand, two hundred seventy-two dollars. So that went up a lot. Um, the budget line of the private day stays about the same. It goes up because. Of cost increase of providers. Mainly, it went, went up two point four eight percent this year or in going into my request. But the actual number of children stays about the same for that. It's the, the other lines that it very, it varies from year to year. So I, we also have different match rates. Um, the local. Match rate, our base match rate is thirty-eight point five three percent. And so the state base match rate is sixty-one point forty-seven percent. And. Yes, it is all taxpayer money, but um. We try to make our local match. To be less. And the way we can do that is if we provide more community-based services. Um, because then. Our match rate is nineteen point two five, two six percent, the locality match rate. And so our. At, at the end of the fiscal year, of fiscal year uh, twenty-two. Our effective match rate was lower than our base match rate. It was thirty-five point twenty-two percent. So that meant that we had um. Used a lot of community-based services. Which is what we like to do because that keeps the children in the community. It's not sending them away to residential or group homes that are more expensive. As of the first of this year, our effective match rate was thirty-six point eighteen percent, still below our base match rate. However, I don't expect it to stay there because, like I said, we have these. Um, foster care children that are very um, ha- have a lot of needs. And expensive services. So that will bring us back up to our match rate. Hopefully, we won't go above our base match rate. Any questions?
No real questions. You know, we've been, we've been seeing this um. You know, grow in its utilization. And I know that the, the General Assembly has some bits to do with that as well, but um. It's somewhat stabilized, I think, over the last, the last few years, or at least we expected to be somewhat of a stable, whereas maybe before we, sometimes it came with a shock, but um. But yeah, you never know when you're going to pick up, you know, a case like that that's going to uh, really increase the the need for um, you know, for the spend. That's, that's not something that's optional, so.
Right, correct.
I guess piggyback on Mr. Moskowsky's, there is no other alternative, correct, to these situations?
Then CSA. The CSA is the funding of last resort. So we are charged to use Medicaid wherever possible. Um, if DSA, if it has determined that the child is four E eligible. Um, if D S F, if it has determined that the child is four E eligible, federal mon- but monies are used for those children. These three, these siblings are not four E eligible, so it falls on C S A.
And it's also a state requirement that, that we provide that, correct?
Oh, yes. Yeah, yes. These are mandated children, and they're some sufficient in the C S A program. The, uh, foster care and the I E P special ed children, all some sufficient and mandated.
Just a quick question on, like you said, the one that went up so much, the non four E section. Now, how long do they usually stay in the system? Is it the year? Does it just continue or do they?
Eh, eh, yes. These are all very young children, so it's a good possibility they will be.
Many years.
And if they don't get it, if they get adopted, then that, that's good. Um, but if not, they can stay in foster care through age eighteen and then go into fostering futures through age twenty-one.
I didn't really say, I noticed something beyond eighteen.
How's, where are they now, did you say? Do you know?
Where, how old are they? They are eight, seven, and four.
Now, just these circumstances, did you see so many grandparents raising their kids now?
That's true.
Not in this situation necessarily. Anybody else having it, but?
No, reading up on four E.
And I would just like to say again, thank you for all you do. It was great, it was great to see you again.
Thank you.
Ma'am, Ms. Brown, you got to tell us where we're getting all this money.
Well, that's pretty much it. Um, the next time we meet will be February sixth, and at that time, our department head will actually be presenting their request to you. Um, we have amended, we were going to try to get the revenue projections to, um, to the, to the board, I think, February thirteenth. February thirteenth, and we, we're going to have to push that down to the March sixth work session, this, the budget work session. Um, we're still trying to put all the, the numbers together to figure out where, what they, one percent and things, all that good stuff, but we're, we're getting, we're making progress.
But I understand asking, well, personally and some others, we're not seeing that failure to pay that you thought was going to face because they didn't have the money, like the increase in personal property tax.
We did receive some information from the commissioner just this past weekend where that, that it's twenty-two percent reduction in assessed values on the, uh, vehicles. So we are going to have to do some work on that for the vehicle tax.
Oh, so we lowered it two months? Is that what you're saying?
I, I don't. It'll be, yeah, it'll be the next.
This calendar year as opposed to?
The assessed value has gone down, so.
Oh, okay.
And we, we expected that, and that's kind of the reason why we kind of went the ro- the road we did to actually pull that from personal property and just be able to focus on, okay, we know that this is going to come up and, you know, it's up now, it's going to come down, so we can address that issue separately from personal property.
Cause there were some thoughts that folks may not be able to financially pay for. You're not really seeing that, correct? Or you can't tell.
Um, I think I ran a delinquent report today, and she had, yeah, it, it, it looks like we did a pretty good collection as of the, uh, the end of this month, too.
You don't have to do it right now. I was just trying to get an idea of how we were singing.
We, and I will be presenting you the, uh, second quarter financial statement, probably in the next few meetings, too, and you'll be able to see the overall effect on where, what revenues we were bringing in and all that, too. So that'll give you a really good idea of how we felt from what we anticipated versus what was paid.
Ms. Brown, I know you, you got all the figures of just these few departments have come today. How much is the increase? I know I could probably soon add up every page, but. You knew it was going to. We don't want.
Well. I really wouldn't want to speak too soon right now because there's a lot of pieces right now. Yeah.
Eighty, fifty, a hundred.
We're trying to, on right hand.
Yeah, cause like you said, that's just now.
I noticed she didn't do it.
Too soon, too soon.
Well, I, I think it, it, it's going to be important to look at this, because not, not all of this is.
That's correct. Yeah, the comp board is going, our revenues for comp board are going to increase for that, too. And I think that's, um.
So do not add up that right hand column, and yeah, that's the increase that's not.
So we want to look at twenty-two.
Exactly. Well, and that's why, that's what I was trying to ask then earlier was what, what's the local match gap between last budget and this budget? Because this right hand column that we're being shown here is not for locals.
Yeah, that's the fact because I think it shows.
It's always true.
I was going to be, I was going to try to quickly pull up that report because I do already, I know the number for vehicle tax. I just, I gotta pull it up. But you'll, you will get it with the financial statement.
Any other say, move on? Uh, Ms. Fox is at the budget section, but you want to mention the ongoing election right now in what are the hours?
I do talk kind of loud, but it's not. Um, so yeah, we do have our special election going on. We started Friday, January the twentieth. Um, my numbers as of today, we had, um, fifty-three that have come in person so far, and we've had about the same comeback in mail, um, from our by mail group. We sent out three hundred and thirty-nine initial ballots because those are who are on our permanent absentee. Those are people that have signed up to receive ballots for every election moving forward. Um, and so we've already gotten about fifty-four of those back. So, I mean, it's really early. We will see an increase in numbers, obviously, like I told you a couple of weeks beforehand, those Saturdays and on election day, but we are Monday through Friday, eight-thirty to four-thirty in our office. We do have to be open the last two Saturdays prior to the election, so February the twenty-fifth from eight AM to four PM, and March the fourth from eight AM to four PM, and then obviously on Tuesday, March the seventh, on election day, from six AM to seven PM at your normal precinct.
All right, the next item we have is number five, over to supervisors and requests, and I normally write it down, but I don't think I did. Steven going to start it. I think he started it last time.
But, yeah, that doesn't matter. No, I don't have you right now. I'm just trying to get through this. I mean, same stuff we've been thinking about. We, some of that stuff we can't really work to finish the budgets. The library doesn't, like, they'll maybe find a building, a better building.
We got a spot.
Yeah, that's true.
Is it my turn?
Okay.
Um, we, we getting that broadband update in February? They're scheduled for the thirteenth. I'm going to confirm who is actually going to be available for that.
Okay. That's something to Mr. Pien, is, is what I've heard. I just saw people out in the field today, and they said they were from Dominion Power, and they told us it's going to be two years, and we were promised that it was going to be within eighteen months. I'm like, wait, but, but that was the people from Dominion Power. They were measuring the polls again. They did it three months ago. They specifically said it won't be for two years, so I guess they'll have more information for us then. I hope.
I, I, I hope so, because that, uh, we, this, the latest, we questioned them. There was no request for any kind of extension.
Shocked when they said that. I'm like, what?
Asked specifically if they were going to need an extension, and as of when I asked at the beginning of this January, no, there was not.
To make sure Mr. Green was clear, that may very well be related to Breeze Line and the R dot versus all points of the batting.
Good point. Could be, but I would hope that in, in any case.
In between the two systems, I know this is the main part of, of the people up in this area of the county that are on Virginia Power around here. That aren't in that iffy period, the iffy area between one and the other, like me. I'm never, but anyway, this is, they're, they're on the list, Breeze Line. I mean, they said they're getting in on that, so.
And this will be a very good question for all points.
I'm good, Mr. Hodges.
But, uh, several years ago, we asked for detailed, uh, presentations. I think the staff has done a commendable job in giving us what we were, what I was expecting for sure. It's, it's getting better and better. Departments, uh, came in with, um, explanations, able to answer, I think, ninety-nine percent of the questions. And, um, again, I commend you for doing that. Makes our life and job a little bit easier. It's always not the fun part of the, of this whole thing, but it's got to be done. And kind of an offset, now's the time to be picking up trash. This county is trash everywhere. It's off, off the budget comments, but those listening, those listening later on, please, uh, grab a bag and pick up in front of your house.
It's, it's a proper supervisor's request. Even, I said it's proper, it's supervisor.
It's budget with night, so.
And, and I have to agree with you, ma'am. There are certain areas that are just unreal, and, and it's almost like folks pick that area to put everything out. And they're probably, one of the worst areas I've ever seen is when you come off a two ninety-five, over sixty-four. That is covered in that, and nobody's ever picked that up. Okay. That's all I had, uh, for everybody to get out and vote, uh. We will have the November one coming behind that one. So anyway, that's, that's all I have, and I don't think we have a close. Yeah, okay. And I have a motion.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Two.
Mr. Warren?
Hi.
Mr. Moskowski?
Hi.
Mr. Ringland?
Hi.
Mr. Barber?
Hi.
Chairman Hodges?
Hi.
Everybody have a good night.